I like it. You did show.
How are you?
Good.
Well, not hit.
Not hit. Yeah, he was probably better than this.
This is the July the 2nd, 2015 council work session. And if you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rust.
Dear Lord, many times we thank you for the beautiful sunny day here in Canton. Today, thank you for the rain. You probably get many requests from other parts of these beautiful United States for less sun and any rain you can spare. We also have six billion gallons of fresh water in our reservoir thanks to the wise foresight of a previous council. May we work here tonight and make equally wise decisions that cost less. In your name we pray, amen.
Come in. Thank you. I'd like to welcome our guest investors here tonight, and I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Some more.
Second.
Any changes or anything to that? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the approval. You have also in your agenda package the minutes from June 18th, council meeting, and are there any changes or corrections to be made to those?
Motion approved.
Have a motion, we have a second. Have a motion in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. You also have the financials for May in your package, and if there are any questions or comment, this is for informational purposes only. Melissa Foster is here, and she can help us answer them if we have any questions. Anyone? Okay. Then we will go to the 10-minute public input. Before we do that, I would like to remain to count, remind the council, when you speak, please get fairly close to the microphone, make sure it's turned on, and speak into the microphone so that our folks can hear you, because if you lean back, you can't hear at all. Okay, our 10-minute public input period, Dan Casey?
I don't think he's ready.
You okay?
I'm all right.
Okay. All right. Under our old business, we have the update on the city goals, master plan for downtown, council members McGrew and Grant, do you have anything to add at this point?
Yes, we have made a recommendation for, to go with TSW for the planning firm, and Mr. Patton will be presenting the contract for council's approval later on in the meeting.
So, okay. Thank you. Economic development, Councilman Goodman, Huffman, and myself, I would say, you know, we have, don't have anything extra to report at this particular time, but we are, downtown is getting another restaurant, brew pub type restaurant, just, just to the right of the Snug Restaurant. So, this is going to be a brew pub type restaurant that will actually be brewing some of their own special beer. The, anyone else on that? If not, improved management of parks, Mr. Huffman's not here, does anyone want to make any comments on that? If not, we will go to the next one. Debt reduction, Mr. Peppers?
I don't have anything to report.
Okay, that's fine. We do know it's going down, right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, item B, under old business, discussion of selection of consulting firm TSW for preparation of the LCI River Mill Master Plan Update and Contract, council members Grant and McGrew.
We sent out requests for qualifications a few weeks ago, and we got responses from six firms. With talking with Mr. Patton and Mr. Thomas, Mr. Patton knew people in each of the six firms. He said and assured us that whichever firm we chose would do a really good job. So, I felt very comfortable knowing that whomever we chose would do the job we needed to be done. Therefore, we went through a ranking system and chose two firms. We invited them to come in and talk with us, and knowing, as little as I know, Mr. Grant's probably first time too, learned a lot from Mr. Patton and Mr. Thomas, from the two firms that came to speak with us. So, it was a matter of which firm had most energy, the progressive ideas, and we came to the choice of TSW. And I'm, if Mr. Patton is ready to talk about it, is there anything you need to say, Mr. Grant?
Mr. Patton.
And Mr. Giles is here from TSW to speak and answer any questions that need to be answered.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor McGrew, Councilman Grant, Mayor and council members. TSW is the firm that we are recommending that City Council approve to enter into a contract. This is a livable centers initiative grant program administered through Atlanta Regional Commission. The contract has been submitted to Atlanta Regional Commission for their review. We have received word that everything is in order with their requirements, federal requirements in regards to the city executing the contract. It has been submitted to the city attorney's office for their review prior to City Council formally authorizing signature of the contract. We're very excited about this project. TSW, we think, is going to do a wonderful job for the city, and if any of you have any questions of me or of Mr. Giles.
I believe, I believe that the contracts were 125,000?
That is correct.
And what was the anticipated timeframe for?
The, everything has to be done, all payments made, and everything submitted back into Atlanta Regional Commission no later than July 31st, 2016.
Okay.
This contract has to be approved no later than July 31st, 2015.
Okay. Anyone else? Ms. McGrew?
I'd like to invite Mr. Giles to come up and talk to us a little bit about the public input that TSW will be seeking.
Good.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Glad to be here. Good evening, Mayor Hobgood, members of the council. I'm Woody Giles again with TSW, really excited to be here, working for Canton. We've worked with dozens of communities all around the Atlanta region and across the south, especially small town downtown, so we feel like we have some great ideas to bring your town. One thing we really believe in is listening, so we're new to Canton. I gave myself the grand tour this afternoon, and I think I already met half the town, just sort of poking my head in some of the businesses and everything, and already got some great ideas. But we want to have a really open process. We'll have some public meetings like this one that are in a formal place and go in the paper, but I'd also like to be creative with how we engage people. We'd love to do a lot of one-on-one interviews, focus groups to get started, make sure we know things. If there's other ways we can engage people that are more interesting and get good input on the future of downtown, we'd love to use those, just to make sure that we really engage the community, because the more that the residents and business owners of Canton buy into the plan, the more success it's going to have.
Right. Okay. You have a question, Mr. Rust?
I have a question of Ken, but you can probably answer it. Every, the way I understand it, then everything has to be completed by one year from the end of this month, July 31st, 16. Is that correct?
That's correct. We haven't had our internal meeting to work out the schedule yet. It may be that we're done a little sooner than that. We don't want to space out the public meetings too far, because sometimes people lose interest, and we don't want to pack it all in, because it may be too fast for us and for the public to get used to, so we'll have to find that schedule, but it may be done, maybe that we're done in the spring of next year.
But your public input would probably come in the next six to nine months, and then you'd do your work, and that, that would be, the report would be a week, 13 months from now.
That's right. We'll have a series of meetings, our first meeting maybe in August or September, and we'll have meetings throughout, throughout the year during that time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Glad to be here.
Thank you. Under old business, item C, discussion of the old Ball Ground Sewer Design Task Order. Mr. Peppers?
I'll let Mr. Hattavian update you on this project.
Earlier this year, we had Atkins do us assessment options for improving the old Ball Ground Sewer from essentially where Enterprise Rent-A-Car is, all the way along the river down to the Caldwell Lift Station, which is right across from the treatment plant. They have come up with a, they completed that study, come up with different options, and we want to proceed with the, with one of the options in the report, without getting too specific on the details. I mean, we're going to parallel about 6,800 feet of sewer, put in a new force main across Highway 5, and bring a new water line into the wastewater plant. The thing that's critical to this is timing of other ongoing projects, specifically the wastewater plant construction. The new force main is going to be coming across Highway 5 through the parking area at Bowling Park, and we want to get that in before the contractor paves, repaves the parking lot as part of the treatment plant project, and he's scheduled to do that, I believe, in May of 2016. That's one of the constraints. The other one, and this one may be a little more difficult, is running a new parallel sewer up in front of the new QuickTrip. Now, they're getting ready to begin construction this month, finish their demo, and then start their utility work, and we wanted to get any work done in that area, at least coordinated through their contractor, so that we only have to tear up that place once. That one's going to be a little more difficult, I don't know how well the, the timing's going to work out on that one, but we have a couple of options to work with to minimize disruption there, so. I have received a proposal from Atkins, we're still tweaking the final numbers, but it's in the vicinity of $180,000, and that's design, survey, construction management permitting, it's the whole shoot and match, so. We did have it budgeted in fiscal year 15 as well as carrying over into 16, so.
So, what, what exactly are your plans for the, where the racetrack's going?
Um, we're going to basically, between the racetrack and Juniper Street, we're going to parallel the existing sewer with a 24- and 30-inch gravity sewer, and basically take a lot of the, the pressure off the existing line.
But you're going, you're going to try to get at least a section of that in where racetrack's going prior to?
Yeah, if we can.
Their construction.
Yeah, and it may be something is, we may have to fast-track the design and see if we can get their contractor to do the work for us and, and work out the details later.
Part of this, Mr. Mayor, is that, you know, we want to be very cognizant of somebody investing to open up a business, and we know that we have work that needs to be done in that area. If we can get with their group to install the piece in front of their property, on their property, while they're doing the other work in the area, that may keep us from having to come back in later on down the road and tear up entryways, and have to, have to repair something that they've already put in place by just getting it done with their contractor up front, knowing that we're going to tie in on both sides.
Now, again, that, that hasn't been confirmed through QuickTrip or anything like that, but it's, it's, we've certainly had, we've had discussions with them, so it's, it's an option. And, and looking at the plans, I don't know where the new sewer's going to go, but we may not be infringing on their, their new paved area, we still may be in the grassy island area in front of the site already, so.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Question? Okay, thank you, David. I question. Oh, I'm sorry.
This, this is the portion of the sewer, is it going to increase the capacity for the bluffs?
Yes. Yeah. So, it'll, it'll take capacity from, from the bluffs, it'll take increased capacity coming down from Lower Canyon as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item D, discussion of the stormpipe replacement project bid results. Is that Mr. Hattavian? Mr. Hattavian? Okay.
We received bids on the stormpipe replacement project. We received two bids, and it was broken up into, into three phases. We were making our bid selection on the Phase 1 portion only. Site engineering was the low bidder, Georgia Development Partners was the second low bidder, there was a difference of about $12,000. Site engineering unfortunately did not submit all the required bid forms with their bid. It was three, three forms that they didn't include.
But they were the lower bidder anyway, overall.
They were the lower bid on, on Phase 1, correct, and which was what the deciding criteria was, but.
And I would just mention.
I mean, they were the higher bidder in, in total of all the phases that you were doing.
They were the higher bid in all phases, correct, but from the bidding documents, we were making our award or a recommendation on, on the Phase 1 only, but they didn't include all the, all the forms, so the question becomes, do you go with the next low bidder?
Well, and, and when it, when it came to me, I mean, you hate to be in a situation where you only have one true bidder, but, but the bid that, the bids that were submitted, and we looked at it, you know, from a pricing standpoint, they were comparable enough that we felt comfortable in, even though the higher bidder on Phase 1 ended up being the lower bidder on the entire project, the fact that they went detailed enough to get all of their paperwork in made us a little bit more satisfied with that application.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? Ms. McGrew?
Mr. Hattian, you, have you had experience with this company, the low bidder?
Me personally, no, I haven't.
And have you gotten good references for this company?
I'm, I'm assuming that the engineer, Stan Tech, has checked out all their qualifications. We'll follow up with them to make sure that, that they.
And this is who you're recommending?
Excuse me?
This is who you're recommending?
Uh, well.
We're, we're recommending the high bidder on the first phase, which is Georgia Development Partners, but they are the low bidder on the entire project.
What was Stan Tech's involvement in this?
They did, they prepared the design documents and bidding documents, and certified the bids, and conducted all that, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you. Item E, discussion of the encroachment removal of trees from Riverstone Parkway DOT rideaway. Mr. Peppers?
Give this one to Mr. Patton. I would just, I would just note on this that we don't currently have any money in this year's budget related to this project, so if this is something that we want to do, we'll have to, we'll have to evaluate where we're going to receive funding for.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, council members, as all of you are aware, we've had ongoing discussions in regards to the Riverstone Parkway as it relates to old Ball Ground Road, and had discussions about removal of some of the vegetation within the G Dot Riverstone Parkway right-of-way. Georgia Department of Transportation indicated to us, the city, that they would allow an encroachment to remove those pine trees, and would require an encroachment agreement. We did solicit bids, working with Public Works CFO. We received three bids, Stephen Postel's Tree Service, Ingram's Tree Service, CNC's Tree Service. The low bid was Stephen Postel Tree Service, $19,500. It's a good bit less than the other two, which was 29,530,000. This does include removal of the trees, removal of the stumps, dress up and regressing of the areas.
Okay.
As Mr. Peppers had indicated, there is not money in this year's budget for this.
Okay. Ms. Goodman, you have a question?
Mr. Patton, that piece of property there was primarily because someone was looking at purchasing or renting that particular building in front of that, they wanted to get signage. In your opinion, that sign that's already there, if those trees are removed, do you think they will be able to see that from, from Riverstone?
It's my opinion that I think they probably would be able to see that sign as they're driving in a northeasterly direction out of Canton towards Ball Ground. Won't know until the trees are removed, but it's my opinion that it would open up a view show.
Well, we, I know Mr. Grant and I both looked at it, and I think we both thought the same, but at the time, state was talking about charging us a lot of money to clear those trees, but it sounds like it'd be a good opportunity to, to try it at least, to help, help that particular person move in a different building.
But it sounds like it'd be a good opportunity to, to try it at least to help, help that particular person move in a different building. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Grant?
I think in addition to helping the visibility on Old Ball Ground Highway, I mean, if you look at that bank and those trees, it really is pretty unsightly. I think it would also go a long way to beautifying, you know, that corridor of influence as well. So I think it's, it's quite overgrown and the trees that are on the roadside that are planted, that we planted there, it really kind of distracts from those as well. So I think, I know it's, it's a lot of money, but I think in addition to helping those businesses be more visible on Old Ball Ground Highway would certainly help beautify Riverstone Parkway as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add, it's more about removing those volunteer trees that are, if you will, kind of a nuisance in regards to that slope. It does take away from what the city spent in the street trees along Riverstone Parkway, which is some of the G dot requirements.
Mr. Rust?
Ken, I mean, it's an obvious statement, but I just took down two 40-foot volunteer trees in my yard, so I know what that does. So the cost to remove those trees will go up exponentially if we let them keep growing. And it's just going to make it worse.
That is probably a true statement.
So cheaper to do it now than later, especially if you're going to try to prevent future growth.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Yawn?
Have we looked at, after this is, these trees are taken out, some sort of plan or some permission from the DOT to kind of make sure it doesn't happen again, to take out any volunteers that start up?
The city could certainly approach Georgia Department of Transportation in regards to entering into a maintenance agreement for that section of right of way. That would be the next step after this removal through this encroachment agreement that G dot would require prior to the removal of the trees. But they will certainly entertain a discussion with the city in regards to an agreement for maintenance of that section of right of way.
In other words, we could do it. We haven't done that, but we could do that.
Yes, sir.
It'd probably be well received, I think, anyway. I think that's, that's something really we do need to do. And maybe we're going to ask our city manager to try to find that money between now and the next couple of weeks before we need to vote on it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members.
Thank, thank you, Ken. Adam F., update on the Wiley Wilson contract. And this is the contract for the Northwest Fire Station design. Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir. We, we have a contract in hand from, from Wiley Wilson for this project. We know that the council wants to move as quickly as we can on the construction of it. I have, I've had an opportunity to look at it and I know Chief Floyd's had an opportunity to look at it. We've, we've delivered it, of course, to the, to the city attorney to look at. And I think we should have some response from him early next week on that. It, it is basically our standard contract that we have used in other projects. So Mr. Dyer will be able to check out the language in that. But really what we would like to do is go ahead and get the council's blessing to move forward with the contract and execute it as, as quickly as we can so we can get this project going for the city.
Mr. Grant, have a comment?
Yes, I noticed on the, the schedule, and I think it's just a mistake on, on the start construction date, on the, on the monthly thing, but the, the date says start construction 1-2-17. I think that's, I think that's a mistake because over to the right, it looks like they're starting construction.
It should be 16, it should be 17. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's, I want to make sure.
Anyone else?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the contract and request that you sign the contract, Billy.
Second motion?
Have a motion in a second. Now, this is, this is, this contract is for like $64,000, I believe it is. And this is the same architectural firm that is doing the design of the county's fire stations. Now, they have two underway, I believe, with the county. So they've obviously got some very good experience and we're looking forward to them moving and working with our fire, fire chief. And, and also our chiefs working with the county fire chief since the county will be operating that station initially. And so, you know, we want to make sure everybody's on board with it, so we're glad to get this thing going. So anyone else have a, have a comment about that? Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, all members voting for the motion. Thank you. We really needed, that's one of the few votes that we will have in a work session, but we felt like we needed to expedite that and, and get that thing moving. It's, it's dragged on far too long, so there's still a long ways to go, but we're going to get there now. It's on its way. All right. Under new business, information and request to use monies in the police department budget for the purchase of body cameras for full deployment with our patrol officers. Mr. Peppers?
I'd like to invite Chief Mitchell up to, to talk to, to this issue. I know, I'll, I'll just mention that, you know, we have, we have a very well-trained police force in the city. And we have a very engaged population as well. And unfortunately, you know, there are a lot of issues around the country that don't necessarily reflect what's going on here in the city of Canton. But the chief and I both agree that this is a good opportunity for us to show good, a good use of our force and, and an opportunity to help protect not only our officers, but the public through the use of these cameras. So I'll let him, I'll let him talk about it.
Thank you. Mayor, council?
I'm taller, so I gotta get this up here. Just a second. What Mr. Peppers says, said, body cameras, as you know, you see on the news every day, has become a very large issue in the country. And a lot of the budgetary concerns and storage concerns on the backend of body cams, what hinders a lot of agencies across the country be able to purchase them because of budgetary reasons. I wanted to provide you some information tonight and also get approval to use some funds that we've been able to save this year in other areas of the police department to purchase 30 units. This would outfit our patrol division and our traffic code enforcement and parking enforcement officers. Looking at a cost of approximately $45,000, this would also include a server. Where I'd have some further conversations with Ms. Weiss from IT to where our officers, when they pull up in the back of the police department, the videos would automatically download instead of having our evidence custodian have to do them by hand. And a server, an encrypted server would, would, would protect the integrity of our evidence and the videos. Like I said, we do have funds in our budget. We do have most of up-to-date policy now that, that, with the new update in state law that took effect July 1st. We have that in, in place. We have one of the units that's about to come in. We're going to be field testing to ensure. We have a technology committee. They want to make sure that this is the device that'd be the best suited for our officers to use. But we feel right now that it looks like that is going to be. Same device of, same company is our mobile in-car cameras, so they're fully compatible. So this is something that we were looking for. Future with, future capabilities of wireless with, with the compatibility being able to pull up and, and download to our, our server at the police department. Just touching on some of the benefits of, of body cameras for a police agency. We really believe that it's going to help strengthen our accountability, prevent confrontational situations, resolve officer involved incidents and complaints, improve agency transparency, identify and correct inter-agency problems if there are any, strengthen officer's performance and improve evidence documentation. We really believe that moving forward now will help us move, move in the future to provide a better, more transparent service to the, to the citizens and also increase their trust with our agency. That's, that's about the issue with body.
Anybody have any questions about the body cameras?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Rust?
Yeah, Chief Mitchell, I just came back from Savannah and one of the things, I attended a three-hour seminar where there were three, four police chiefs there. The, the main subject was body cams and the positive effects that it's had on their police forces. And I've been a proponent of that for a long time here. But, and then there was a work session the following day and I didn't go to that because I wanted to know what you thought was the best device and you've already got a history. And I would rather hear what you had to say than what a bunch of people trying to sell devices have to say. So that's my, but I thought you had experience. We have eight body cams now, I think, don't we?
Yes, sir. We have body cameras now, three.
Are we buying the same exact one or updated?
This would be a different company.
Okay, so we're going to replace the eight?
Yes, sir.
With the new one?
With, well, we have, we have three. We've replaced that with, with the new.
Oh, okay.
And what I was saying, and it's, it's all over the news, is the storage costs, that's a huge concern for agencies. A lot of the storage costs can get into a lot of money. And I believe through what we've identified here with this company, we'll be using a server to, to store our evidence and our, our footage. And with our retention periods, we'll be able, some of that will automatically purge as we go forward. But some of that arrest and things such as that have to be kept for, for five years plus. So I believe that this route will be more financially, this will be the best route to go.
I think, I think TASER, which is a big manufacturer of body cams, has kind of realized that the razor blades are worth far more than the, than the, than the device itself. So they want that storage. So how does the $45,000 break down into equipment and storage? And how many years of equipment expense are in the $45,000? Are we, you're going to come back every year looking for cloud storage or Camille storage?
This would be a, this would be a server-based storage.
In our, in our, in our police department?
Yes, sir.
We're not going to, we're not going to an outside storage?
No, sir.
So when you come in every day, they're going to be downloaded, so it won't be an online streaming?
No, sir.
Real time? There will not be real time? End of a shift is when, yeah.
Yes, sir.
So that'll save a lot of money?
That will save a good bit of money. Also, with, with the storage in these devices, we'll have, it's got View software and things such as that. If we have complaints, we can pull it up, look at it instead of have, having to by hand go down, burn it on a disk or a thumb drive. We can pull it up from our desktops. So it's, it's good cutting-edge technology. And we believe it'd be more financially prudent to go this way than the wireless storage, which can get into a lot of cost.
The subject, the subject of body cameras and the way to deflect what's been happening around this country was very, very, every single one of these guys talked about this. Now they're trying to do the best they can to make sure that. I think one of the other things that came out was the, the fact that the police department, you just mentioned it a second ago, so I'm love to hear it. The honesty and integrity with which you proceed, once you have evidence, if you make a mistake, you admit you make a mistake.
Absolutely.
And don't tell Billy about it until after you admit it. No, but I mean, but there was a lot of, there was a guy there that was from Valdosta and he, he, his, his city manager had, gave him full authority to be honest when it comes to mistakes they make and the willingness to admit to that. So I think that's the thing that builds trust within your community. And the body cams are going to take a lot of the blame game out of this police work.
That's, that's definitely our goal, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything? Okay. Anyone else? Okay, then you have the next item too, looks like services and maintenance with New Police Radio Communication Company?
Yes, sir. Since 2012, we've been with a company and really honestly, we haven't had the services and, and maintenance that we need to have to have a good radio communication system. We have many dead spots and several issues that, with our radio system now, that really it's an officer's safety and security issue when officers are on traffic stops on calls for service. I've since discontinued service with that radio company and through research and through talking to county agencies, our city fire department, many of those agencies use, it's called diversified electronics. They've been in this area for a long time. They actually have a representative here in county. So what I'm wanting to do through our funds that, again, that we have currently is start, start service with this company. It's going to afford us quicker response for any issues we have. We have some current maintenance issues that have to be addressed now. They've already done, gone out and completed a site survey of our towers and our, some of our radios that we have now and have found some issues that we, that we have that can, can currently be corrected, that I believe is going to give us a better communication system, give us 24/7 response. And I think my last point here is one of the biggest ones is interoperability with other agencies. We can't, we cannot talk with the sheriff's office, Holly Springs, Woodstock at this time, unless it's done through, say, a command situation where it's patched through. I believe going through this company in, in meetings I've had, they'll be able to afford us the opportunity to be able to speak with the other law enforcement organizations in the municipalities in this county, which is huge, especially during a critical incident. Even support for every day, for day-to-day. So that's, that's, that's my request.
Okay. Mr. Peppers here?
And I would just follow up that we don't want to have an officer in a situation where they're out on a call and the only way they can get the sheriff's department is to dial them on a cell phone. You know, that's, that's not the value of having a good communication system. And if we can't, you know, it may cost us a little bit more each year, but we'll make up for it in, in the safety of our officers and, and being able to collaborate with our other agencies here in the county.
Will there be any agency that you will not be able to, to communicate with under this?
In speaking with the company and the conversations I've had, Chief Floyd knows, fire chief knows a good bit about it as well. They'll be able to set us up to where we'll be able to speak with or communicate with, with the other agencies. I don't think there's another agency we won't be able to speak with in the county, talk to in the county, communicate with.
Good. Mr. Rust?
Yeah, that includes the Cherokee County Fire Department, right? Because they're going to be doing Lower Canyon.
Right, well, our, our main contact with them would be the.
Our chief.
Our, our chief, yes, sir.
I, I have one other question. I'm just going down a list and, I mean, tell me if I've missed anything. Our police officers have cell phones in their cars, computers, communication equipment, cameras on their cars, cameras on their body, and electronics in the car itself.
Yes, sir.
Don't get struck by lightning or we'll fry everything. But I, I, it just seems like a technological nightmare in a way to, so many things are different technologies and they're all right there at their fingertips.
Yes, sir.
Not to mention the fact that they got a weapon they might have to pull out once in a while. But, but the, I, do we, one of the things that came out in that three-hour session I had is that the communities, the community police department could look like, should look like the community.
Yes.
So there's a big rush to hire minority police officers. And he said, geez, a minority officer that's trained can just about write his own ticket. But one of the things that when I was on the 2050, Canton 2050 thing I looked at was that 30% of our population is Hispanic. Looked to me like that's going to 50 in the next few, 20 years, we'll be at 50%. What is our mix of, how close are we to mirroring our community and our police department in our, in our hiring policies? And is that a priority for you?
It is. Actually, it's one of our 2015 goals and work projects this year.
2015, 1-5?
This year.
Clarify, thanks, okay.
It's, it's our, one of our work projects this year is diversity in hiring and recruiting. Do we mirror our community right now? No, we don't. Do we need to? Absolutely, as you say. And that is one of the work projects that we have. We put brochures together. We're in the process of putting a video together. We've had a town hall meeting with our, our, with, basically here in Stumptown with the churches. We've met with the pastors and the reverends of the Hispanic community and African-American community to recruit young men and women that would, that want to be police officers, recruit from our own hometown here. We've really started it doing a, our Pacer corridor, our community outreach officer's done a great job of our explorer program. We have a def, a very good diverse, we have 15 explorers and I can't tell you exactly what the makeup is at this point, but we have numerous African-American explorers and now several Hispanics, Hispanic explorers as well. So that's where we're starting. That's where, where we showed in our first town hall meeting the community that this is where we're starting and we want it to develop to the police department. And we want to have a program in place. I don't want to be asked at, at some point, what are you doing about it? And say, well, I sent someone to a job fair. That's not. That's not a plan and that's not a program. So that's something that's currently a work in progress, and again, it's one of our work projects this year. And it'll, and it's, this is going to be continuing work project on the sixteen and on, and beyond, because I think it's extremely important for us to mirror our community.
I, I know we've hired at least one explorer. How many total have we hired over the last few years in the Explorer program?
I want to say four.
Four?
Yes, sir.
Do we, do we hire, also, I know when the chief merchant was here, he was, he was going to school himself.
Yes, sir.
Four hundred and four hours of school he had to get, to get his right to carry a gun and badge in, in Georgia. But did, did, he hired a couple people from his academy. Do you also recruit out of that academy, and are there minorities in that academy?
We do. We, we have recruited out of the academies, actually probably our last four officers, real professional men and women, are from those academies. And that's where we have recruited them from. There are, there are minorities, have been minorities in those academies. We have found, just doing our research for our program and, and work project this year, that many of the agencies south of us, Sandy Springs, Johns Creek, a lot of those agencies, and just because they do have the financial backing, be able to, to provide a higher starting pay, they're, they've been more attractive, but we are definitely working hard to, to, to be able to, to hire more diverse candidates.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it very much. Item C, under new business discussion regarding quitclaim deed for nineteen eighty-seven Community Development Block Grant Program. You have a attachment in your agenda package there. This, back in the eighties, apparently, they had a, there was a program through the Community Development Block Grant Program that would, the city would make loans to low-income homeowners to do certain repairs and updating of, of their homes. And I think they loaned up to ten or twenty thousand dollars, something like that. The ci, the city would get a security deed for that, and it would be, they would be obligated to repay, repay the loan. But if they lived in that house for ten years, the loan was forgiven. So I, I don't think anybody really kept up with that program very well at that time. And, and so occasionally during title searches, when, when some of these homeowners began to sell the property or they pass away and it transfers title, the, the title shows up with this as a, as a lien. And so they then come to the city and ask that we release that. And that, that's what this is about, so. And we have done this in the past as well, so I mean, honestly, I don't think we could tell whether they paid the loan off or didn't, but at that time. But anyway, if, if, if the person's in, that passes away or is selling it now, still has ownership, he has lived there the ten years anyway, they have, so should be forgiven anyway. Okay. Any, any questions, Mr. Rust?
I just have one question. Are we in any way keeping track of the non-payment? I mean, they were supposed to pay for ten years. Do we keep track of the fact that they did or did not pay? It only seems fair that if they pay for ten years, then we forgive it. If they don't pay, maybe we should have a lien for those first ten years. Does that make sense?
You may want to repeat that.
If we agreed that after ten years of living there and paying, making payments, if they are there on ten years and one day, we forgive the balance of the loan, but it seems reasonable that we should have recorded payments for those first ten years, and if they haven't made those payments, if somebody moves in and just doesn't pay us, I'm not sure we should just forgive ten years of non-payment along with the ten, after ten years?
Yeah. I'm not sure if it was a, if it was payment that actually started when they closed out or if, as long as they lived there, they didn't have to make a payment until it started. Up and, if they lived there ten years, they'd never have to. But if they moved away after five years, maybe they had to pay the note off, you know, so I don't. And besides that, I don't think you could, I don't think you'd find the records here that would, would substantiate any of that.
Is, is it a lot of money? I mean, is it, is this just one piece of land or multiple pieces of land?
I'm assuming it's just one house.
One house, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Discussion of the election call resolution, which we will vote on at the November, at the sixteenth meeting. This is a resolution actually calling and formalizing the call of the election this fall. Says, whereas the City of Canton general election will be held pursuant to state laws on Tuesday, November the third, two thousand and fifteen, from seven AM until seven PM at all City of Canton voting precincts. And whereas the City, Cherokee County Election Division will be responsible for the City of Canton general election on November the third, two thousand and fifteen. Whereas early voting will begin twenty-one days before the election at Cherokee County Election Division, located at four hundred East Main Street, Canton. And seven days prior to the election, early voting will be held at Cherokee County Election Division and Woodstock Public Library, seventy-seven thirty-five Main Street, Woodstock, from eight-thirty until five, Monday through Friday. And whereas the mayor and council do hereby appoint City Clerk Susan S. Stanton to serve as the qualifying officer for the two thousand and fifteen general municipal election. And whereas qualifying for the November third, two thousand and fifteen city election will be held at Canton City Hall and will begin on Monday, August thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, at eight-thirty, and will end on Wednesday, September the second, two thousand and fifteen, at four-thirty PM. Qualifications to run for mayor and, or council for the City of Canton are, must be at least twenty-one years of age, must be a registered city voter, shall be a resident of the ward they wish to represent for at least six months prior to the election, and shall continue to reside therein during the member's period of service. Shall be a resident of the City of Canton for at least one year prior to the election. That must be, that doesn't say that, that must be with the mayor. Shall continue to reside in the City of Canton during the term of office. And whereas according to Georgia Election Code, twenty-one dash two dash one thirty-one, qualifying fees shall be set at three percent of the total salary paid in the preceding calendar year. Qualifying fees for the November third, two thousand and fifteen election are three hundred dollars for the mayoral seat and two hundred and forty dollars for council seats. All elected offices for the council are for four-year terms. Okay, so. Adam, you have a comment?
Really, there's really nothing changing. We're just have to do this, that resolution every two, two years.
Right, it has to be called. The election actually has to be called.
Okay.
So many days or months before the, I think it's sixty days before the election, or you have to call it.
There, there's a, there's a question I would always have with definition of residence. Could someone have multiple residences? Meaning they might reside here for a hundred and eighty-one days and reside a hundred and seventy-nine somewhere else?
I think you'd probably have to pick one.
Pick one?
Pick one.
You'd have a choice.
Where you, where you get your mail and where you actually have a reside. You could have, are you saying, could you have multiple, reside in two different wards?
Some people, no, 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 you could res, no, 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 you live in one ward and live in another state, whatever, you just live somewhere else. Three, half the year, less than half the year, but you're truly a resident of Georgia.
Well, you know, if you're a resident of Georgia and live in the ward, even if it's just for six months of the year, I think you're a
Thank you.
Be qualified.
That'd be good. Thank you.
Of course, I'm not an attorney, though, you know, you. Item E, discussion of Public Works recommendation to contract with Bartow Paving for the L-MIG projects in the amount of a hundred and eighty-two thousand, two ninety, seventy-two. Mr. Peppers?
Mr. McClure's here, and he may have some more information on this, but, but we did go through a bid process and, on these, and Bartow Paving was the low bidder on the, on the bid process.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We received at Public Works four bids received in for the two thousand and fifteen L-MIG projects. Bartow Paving came in as the low bidder, and it is a recommendation from Public Works to go with the low bidder for Bartow Paving.
Okay. And this is the, the streets that are inclu, included in your agenda package there. This is like, what, four, five different streets and sections of streets?
Yes, sir. It's four streets. West Marietta Street, Jarvis Street, Oakdale Road, and Daisy Circle.
Okay. Any questions on that? Okay. Amazing. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. All right. Next item, the first reading, this will be the first reading for request for alcohol license by the Green Line Brewery, one ninety-two Main Street, Outlet Manager Brent St. Bran. Mr. Peppers, have anything on that?
Just a, just a standard request for approval for an alcohol license for beer pouring. I don't know if the applicant's here tonight. I don't see him.
Okay. Well, we, we have conducted the first hearing, okay. Item G, discussion of the Planning Commission recommendation for KCMP fifteen oh five dash zero zero one, Laurel Canyon. City Manager Pepper, do you have something on that?
You should have all received documentation from our, our Planning and Zoning Department as it relates to the information from the Planning and, Planning Commission meeting and their actions. And I think Mr. Patton is here to talk further, answering questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. Planning Commission did conduct a public hearing on June fifteenth of this year in regards to this application to amend the conditions zoning approval for Laurel Canyon. Planning Commission recommended approval of the applicant's request to modify the conditions from Master Plan zero 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 six dash six and the conditions as revised in two thousand and five. Planning Commission recommended approval of the applicant's request to change the land use in Pod nine from attached townhomes to detached and attached single-family homes. All the lots adjacent to the golf course shall be developed as attached homes. They further recommended approval of the revised development regulations in regards to Pods L-nine, L-ten, L-eleven, Pod six, seven, and eight. This involves the number of lots and density. Recommended approval to change the number of lots in certain pods as identified in the letter of intent. Recommended approval of the relocation of the gate guardhouse to the proposed location as depicted on the revised map, received June eighth, two thousand and fifteen. Relocation of the gate guardhouse shall not be relocated until a new roadway is constructed to Pod nine to allow these residents a means of ingress egress should they choose not to become a part of the Solay development. Also, in association with that recommendation, a walkway golf cart path shall be constructed at the proposed cul-de-sac of Laurel Canyon Trail. This walkway golf cart path shall allow access to the Laurel Canyon Amenity Center and the golf course clubhouse. Lastly, the Planning Commission recommended approval of entrance located at Honeydew Drive to be designated as emergency use only and shall not be used for construction traffic. I'm available to answer any questions any council members have in regards to the Planning Commission recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions? I think we're fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item H, discussion of the school safety zones, fireworks, and firearms. Thomas Weaver. You got three issues there, it looks like. Okay.
If, I'm sorry, if you would, just state your name for the, for the record.
Yes, sir. I'm Thomas Weaver, and I reside at one thirty-one Old Marietta Road here in Canton. Thank you. I just wanted to thank the mayor and members of council for taking up the time to consider the matter more closely based on my written request, and I ask that council enter into meaningful conversation to act on the issue at hand. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any comments regarding the information that you have in your package there? We had an attachment, the school zone resolution, which we approved at the request of the school board back in November of two thousand and fourteen, I believe. You also have a copy of Public Act fifty, Public Act one hundred, and which I'm assuming, well, House Bill one-ten and House Bill four-ninety-two, and then Canton fireworks, fireworks and firearms ordinances. House Bill one-ten, I believe, is the firearms, and I guess four-ninety-two is the, fire, fire, one-ten's not the, one-ten's the fireworks. Other way, all right. They're in the agenda back here. And of course, you have a copy of our current fireworks and firearms ordinance. Anyone have any questions on that, on those issues? That we will take a look at between now, I guess, and the sixteenth? Anything else? Okay, thank you. City managers' report?
All I'll mention is that you should have gotten an email, and I think we have it scheduled. The budget hearings will be on Tuesday, July the fourteenth. We will start at nine AM. And, and you'll get further information, draft copies of the budgets and things like that ahead of time.
Thank you. July fourteenth, nine AM, and, and that's going to be an all-day or probably, right? Could be. Okay, okay. Under the mayor's report, I wanted to request from the council members, as you know, we have adopted the maintenance ordinance, property maintenance ordinance. And under that ordinance, we are, I would guess, required or should have an appeals board for any disagreements that go on if property owner feels that he's being misrepresented or is not getting a fair shake. He can appeal to an appeals board, which is made up of at least three members of the board. There will also be two alternates as well. So I, I, I would suggest that if, if you have any thoughts in the next couple of weeks there, please send me the names. I have a couple of names I think will be, would be good, but I would certainly love to have from the council any names of individuals that you feel would be appropriate to be on that appeals board. So just let, let me know, and you know, we could have, it says a minimum of three on the appeals board, but then you have to have at least two alternates as well, so. Mr. Rust?
Gene, I just had one question. Would you be looking for someone with experience in that field, or is that not required?
Well, it is, it's, it's, it's required that it has someone has a reasonable experience. You know, you could have, you could have someone that, you know, does, for instance, landscaping business or has knowledge of landscaping and so forth like that to know, you know, whether something, the grass is too high or whatever in, in the yard, you know? And, and I think someone with, with some, you know, some carpentry type knowledge would be good to know what, you know? But I don't think it takes an extensive amount of experience to see when a property is, is, is really run down and maybe a, a public health or safety factor.
Gene, Gene, how many people will be on this? Is just three? Is that it? Or is it going to be more?
That's what I'd like to do, just three, actually with two alternates.
Okay. Oh, so might be five.
Well, it says you have to have a minimum of three. We could have five and then two alternates, but you're supposed to have two alternates anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss real estate and litigation.
So move.
Second?
Those in favor, six and five, saying aye?
Aye.
Those no? Okay. We will not be coming back out to vote on any issues resulting from the executive session tonight.